I don't know if David's here. We good? All right, good evening, everyone. If I can have your attention, please. Excuse me? I don't think I'm on there. Yeah, all right. Are we ready? Okay, before I, before we get started, I'd like to welcome Pastor Nathan Young from Grace Church of Alpharetta to lead us in our invocation.
Let's pray. Dear God, we pause tonight before the proceedings begin to acknowledge you as God, and we ask that you would guide our meeting tonight. God, thank you for all the work that you have done in our lives to bring us to this point and this place. Thank you for the city of Milton and for the way you've organized it and the way you are causing it to grow and to flourish. And God, we pray your blessing over our mayor, over the council members, and over all the city employees. And we ask that you would bless their work, that you would cause it to flourish, and that it would be something that they enjoy and that the citizens of Milton would appreciate. And God, we also pray tonight, asking for help for our first responders. We think of the police and our firemen and women, and we just ask your protection for them when they put their lives in harm's way for us going about their daily duties. God, we also pray for those who are vulnerable at this time of year, and we ask your protection, especially as we think of coronavirus and other things during this colder weather. And we pray that you would give our leaders wisdom as they make decisions related to our public health and safety. So, God, we submit all these things to you because you are a gracious God who oversees our lives, and we pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Nathan. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, December 7th, 2020 to order. City strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully. And if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, then please bring your comment cards to the clerk as soon as possible. While the Milton rules allow speaker to turn in their comment card up until the clerk calls the agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards can be accepted. Will the city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will be happy to call roll for the December 7th, 2020, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance, please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you would like to make a comment, please bring your comment card to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outburst, or dialogue with anyone, any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Councilmember Carol Crookley. Councilmember Matt Coons, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Councilmember Peyton Jameson. I'm so sorry. Councilmember Paul Moore. Mayor Joe Lockwood. Councilmember Rick Morick. And Councilmember Laura Bentley. Councilmember Joe Longoria will be joining us momentarily. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to welcome everybody here tonight, and I was going to recognize the previous councilmember Matt Coons here, although he was on the roll call. All right, if our clerk will please sound the next item.
The next item is approval of meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 20330.
I'd like to add an executive session to discuss land acquisition, potential litigation, and personnel. Do you have anything else that staff or council would like to alter on the agenda? Okay, I'll open for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we accept the agenda as read with the adjustment of the executive session to include topics that you noted.
Second. Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Moore with a second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right. If you have any, next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during tonight's meeting. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk or raise your hand if you are attending virtually. Prior to the agenda item being called, please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward or unmute yourself if you are virtual and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes for remarks. City encourages you to review the agenda, and if you wish to speak, to bring your comment cards to the clerk or raise your hand virtually right now. So, do we have any public comment?
We do. Our first comment is from Mr. Matt Coons.
Hello. It's good to see some of you guys again. My name is Matt Coons. I reside at 730 Sable Point Road in Milton, Georgia, and I hope I can get this in under five minutes. So, I want to begin with a story. So, there was a farmer that had a field, and in that field were several sheep. The farmer tended those sheep, feeding them, shaving their wool, and making sure the herd grew for the sake of the farm. One morning, he woke up and went to his herd and discovered several of his sheep were missing, and this greatly disturbed him. He searched the area, but he could not find where they went. The next day, the farmer stood on his porch, keeping a close eye on his sheep, and he saw nothing until around sundown. He saw a sheep that looked a little unusual, acting differently, behaving differently. He left his house to go find that sheep, but by the time he got there, it was already dark and he could not find it. The following day, the farmer went into the field near where he saw that unusual sheep, and he examined the ground mixed with his herd's tracks, and there, in the midst, were the tracks of a wolf. The farmer followed the wolf's tracks into the woods, and after several miles, he found sheep's wool hanging from thorns and branches. At the base of a hill, he found a dark hole. The wolf tracks went into the hole. This was the wolf's den. Now, what happens next, I do not know because, as elected officials, you are that farmer. And the sheep that are disappearing is the precious First Amendment right to freedom of expression through this republic of the United States of America through a democratic process. I'm talking about our vote. When a legal citizen votes, the government must not only protect the right of that legal citizen to vote, but it must also protect the value of that vote. Every vote whose value is not protected is a form of voter suppression and is a failure of its government to protect the rights of its citizens. Sadly, in the November 3rd election, I believe we saw voter suppression on a massive scale. But I'm not the only one. Residents of this city have been following the wolf tracks. Digital warriors such as former FBI agents and server analytics experts have analyzed the data voting records available through government data sets. They have found illegal votes through ballots by nonresidents, underage residents, dead residents, and residents who presume to live at fake resident addresses like UPS stores and jails. Milton poll watchers have testified through affidavits, sworn under oath that they have seen processes that have allowed the suppression of votes through illegal voting. They have testified to this in state hearings. All across this country, brave citizens have come forward to hunt down these wolves. These patriots, through their own time, resources, and love for our country, are finding the tracks, the wolves, of the wolves, and locating the dens. This issue is nonpartisan. Patriots who are both Republican and Democrat have joined in the tracking of the wolves, pressing through the deception, including denial and ridicule, deflection from the allegations, lies regarding actions, destruction of ballots, and coercion to prevent punishment. We believe justice will be ruled, the sheep's clothing will be discarded, and the wolves will be punished, but we must persist. And now, we need your help. It's time. All elected leaders must defend our rights from those wolves who wish to devour them. Americans now depend on you. I am asking this Milton City Council and all city councils around the state of Georgia to pass resolutions to state and county legislative bodies with the influence bestowed upon you by the will of the people to amplify our voice, demand the investigation into voter and election fraud, the righting of all wrongs in all of its forms, and a special call session for a hearing by our state officials. The Milton Council right now, if it so chooses, can add an agenda item to this meeting in consideration of a resolution, and that is within your power, you know that. And the time is short, though, because there's a petition going around for a special call session tomorrow among the state legislature. My hope is, if you lead, others will follow. We've done that before in Milton, I think we can do that again. I have hope in America, I have hope in our courage, but protect the value of our vote. Acknowledge the fraud, pass a resolution, send it to all state and county officials, request a special session, protect the value of our vote, restore the trust, save our republic from the wolves and sheep's clothing, and keep the spirit of America alive. And may God bless the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comment?
Stacy, I don't have any here. No, sir, that is all.
Okay. Close public comment, and then we'll move on to our consent agenda.
The first item is approval of October 19th, 2020, City Council Meeting Minutes, Agenda Item Number 20331. Our next item is approval of the November 2nd, 2020, City Council Meeting Minutes, Agenda Item Number 20332. Our third item is approval of the November 16th, 2020, City Council Meeting Minutes, Agenda Item Number 20333. Our next item is approval of the financial statements and investment report for the period ending October 2020, Agenda Item Number 20334. Our fifth item is approval of ratification of authorization for the Georgia Department of Natural Resources to enforce trespass and illegal hunting laws on city of Milton-owned property, Agenda Item Number 20335. Our sixth item is approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Sweeping Corporation of America, Inc. for sweeping of the major roads, medians, curbs, and gutters called out in the bid document, Agenda Item Number 20336. Our seventh item is approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Engineering 303 LLC for surveying work at Fire Station 42 at 15240 Thompson Road, Agenda Item Number 20337. Our next item is an approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Universal Engineering, Inc. for geotechnical services for Fire Station 42, Agenda Item Number 20338. Our ninth item is approval of a subdivision platte and revision. The name of the development is Louis Renaud at Land Lot 249, District 2, Section 2, at 16500 Hopewell Road. It is a minor platte to be subdivided into three tracts at 4.972 total acres with a density of .60 lots per acre. Agenda Item Number 20339. Our tenth item is approval of Amendment Number 5 to a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Safe Boat Georgia LLC to extend the contract from December 1st, 2020 to May 31st, 2021. Agenda Item Number 20340. Our eleventh item is approval of a domain registration with .gov domain registration system for rights to the MiltonGA.gov domain name, Agenda Item Number 20341. Our next item is approval of a change order number one between the city of Milton and Earth Networks, Inc. for the installation and annual subscription of lighting detection systems at Bell Memorial Park and the Cox Road Athletic Complex, Agenda Item Number 20342. Our thirteenth item is approval of a change order number one between the city of Milton and BM&amp;KPC for the asphalt reconstruction and resurfacing inspection project to provide inspection services for the addition of Bethany Road and Deerfield Parkway, Agenda Item Number 20343. Our next item is approval of change order number one to the agreement between the city of Milton and Tanal Spanger and Associates, Inc. to extend the agreement term to September 30th, 2021 for the research and development of an ordinance to create equestrian, rule-friendly land use practices, Agenda Item Number 20344. Our final agenda item is approval of an enterprise license agreement between the city of Milton and Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc. known as ESRI for geographic information systems software, Agenda Item Number 20345.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'll make motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Morick with a second from Councilmember Jameson. All in favor, please say aye. That's unanimous. Okay. And I want to welcome Jack and your family here tonight. So, our next item, Tammy, if you'll please read the item.
Absolutely. Our next item is proclamation honoring Jack O'Brien Burke for his efforts to cure NF. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, this is, this is exciting. I'm trying to remember Jack since Jake and Beth, when I first met you, it's probably been at least five years or so at your house and all that. So, but was always impressed with, with Jack and his family and whatnot, and it's really, we're really proud of you here from the city perspective and obviously personally, too. So, it's an honor for myself and the city council to present you with this proclamation. So, I'm going to read the proclamation first, and then I'll bring it down and present it to you guys in just a minute. I have a proclamation honoring Jack O'Brien Burke for his efforts to cure NF. Whereas, one in every 3,000 people born have neurofibromatosis NF, a genetic disorder associated with the growth of tumors on nerves in the brain, on the spinal cord, on skin, and other parts of the body. And whereas, this condition, commonly known as NF, can also contribute to blindness, deafness, stunted growth, disabling pain, and other symptoms. And whereas, NF affects people of all races, genders, ethnicities, and regions, including right here in Milton. And whereas, one of those so diagnosed is Jack O'Brien Burke, a 15-year-old student at Cambridge High School in Milton. And whereas, in addition to battling NF since his early childhood, Jack and his family launched a nonprofit Cure NF with Jack aimed at accelerating medical research, driving community action, and raising funds to end NF. And whereas, this foundation has raised millions of dollars in the past decade to support this cause. Well, Jack has been an inspiring public speaker, educator, and voice in the community. And whereas, the Children's Tumor Foundation, at an event headlined by Emmylou Harris and Gavin DeGraw, recently honored Jack with its National Humanitarian Award for Cure NF with Jack's extensive efforts. And whereas, Jack O'Brien Burke, who his mother Beth said has NF, but NF doesn't have him, is a fighter, a role model, and an inspiration for people, young and old, everywhere, especially in his hometown of Milton. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Milton, hereby dedicate and proclaim December 7th, 2020, as Jack O'Brien Burke Cure NF Day in the city of Milton, Georgia, and it's given under my hand and the seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on the 7th day of December, 2020. And Jack, what an honor. Just how about a big round of applause for Jack? Step down, and if Jack, you and your family will step up here, I'll present this, and then we'll get a picture, and the council can all stand back here. We'll stand back here.
So, thank you so much for this. It is really an honor because a lot of people don't know what NF is around the world, but it is really more common than people think. So, this is why, this is why this proclamation is so important and such an honor to me because it brings more awareness to NF, which means one day it could be cured. So, thank you very much. I am so grateful, and happy holidays to you all.
What a special family. Special guy. So, the next two items coming up are also special ones. We'd like to recognize those employees who have been with the city of Milton for 10 years and those that have been with us for five years. As the city manager calls your name, please come forward to receive your pin and have your picture taken.
This item is recognition and presentation of City of Milton 10-year anniversary pins. City Manager Steve Krokoff.
Thank you, Tammy, and thank you, Mayor. Our first recipient for the 10-year anniversary pin is our very own councilmember Joe Longoria.
Just in time.
Councilmember Longoria, if you wouldn't mind staying up, we're going to take a picture just with you and the other 10-year pins. Thanks. The second recipient this evening will be Lieutenant Chris Ward from the Police Department. And Mayor, there were two that couldn't be here this evening, and both were with the Fire Department. That is Brian Murtaugh and Chris Thorne.
The next. We're going to do 10, and then we'll do one with five. Next is the recognition and presentations of City of Milton 5-year anniversary pins. Mr. Steve Krokoff.
Thank you, Tammy. Our first recipient will be from the Police Department, Luke Haydock. Luke? Next up, from Parks and Rec, will be Tom McElveen. Tom? Our next recipient, back from the Police Department, is Logan Pacico. Logan? And from Community Development, Teresa Stickles. Teresa? And our final recipient couldn't be here with us tonight with the Fire Department, and that is Daniel Sanders.
Thank you.
So, for both 5-year and 10-year recipients, as well as everyone else involved with the city, we certainly appreciate all of your time, efforts, and being part of our team. So, thank you so much. Okay. Will the city clerk please sound the final reports and presentation item?
It's proclamation recognizing City of Milton Employee Appreciation Week. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Bad when you get old and you have to put glasses on for the small writing. Tammy, I'm going to have to get a copy of those presentation. Do you have those?
Of these, I have them here.
Okay, the week of December 7th is Employee Appreciation Week in the city of Milton. An opportunity to express gratitude for workers throughout the municipal government for their outstanding efforts to serve Milton citizens during this challenging year. I would like to now read the proclamation. Okay, I'm proud to present a proclamation for City of Milton Employee Appreciation Week. Whereas, city employees work tirelessly every day to enhance the quality of life of Milton citizens. And whereas, they are integral parts of the community as reliable, effective, and caring public servants. And whereas, city employees provide vital services that help make Milton one of the best places to live anywhere. And whereas, these employees reflect on what's happened in the past, work intently to ensure things function well in the present, and plan well for Milton's future. And whereas, their efforts are appreciated greatly by citizens, community leaders, and elected officials. And whereas, city leaders want to formally express their gratitude for employees' diligent, important, and often difficult work over the course of what's been a historic and challenging year. Now, therefore, we, as Milton's mayor and city council, hereby proclaim the week of December 7th, 2020, a City of Milton Employee Appreciation Week. We urge all who live, work, and play here in the, here to recognize city employees' outstanding contributions on their behalf, especially during this challenging year. This is given under my hand and seal of the city of Milton, the 7th day of December, 2020. This is given under my hand and seal of the City of Milton, the 7th day of December, 2020. So, Tammy, I'm not sure whether we're going to present this. Are we going to have all our employees come up? Is that was the plan?
That'd be great.
Okay.
I'm going to come get my proclamation.
Yes, thank you very much.
Go on, Pierce. Let's see how many we got.
Ladies and gentlemen, you are appreciated. Very much so.
And again, I'll, uh, I just want to, want to reiterate that we appreciate everything you guys do for us.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we're going to move on to first presentation of city clerk. Please sound those items.
The first item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Article of the Chapter 2, Section 2, 858, Solicitation or Acceptance of Gifts of the Code of the City of Milton, Georgia. Agenda item number 2346. Our second item is consideration of an ordinance approving a list of names as standby judges for the Municipal Court for the City of Milton, Georgia, pursuant to Article 5 of the Charter, City Charter. Agenda item number 2347. Our third and final item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 4 and Appendix A of the Milton Code of Ordinance, Alcoholic Beverages, to update various sections as substantially reorganized, Article 3. Agenda item number 2348.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first presentation as read.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Jameson with a second from Councilmember Moore. All, uh, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we don't have any items under public hearing, zoning, and agenda or unfinished business. So, the city clerk will please to sound new, sound the new business item.
That item is consideration of a resolution adopting the 2021 City of Milton City Council Regular Meeting and Work Session Schedule. Agenda item number 2349. Ms. Sudi Gordon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay?
Sudi, maybe, um, maybe speak up just a little louder. Can you try again? Sudi, give it.
Sudi was having a little bit of problems, um, via Zoom. I don't know what's going on, but, um, I have her script here ready to read. Thankfully, she does, she does prepare a script. So, um, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are asking for the Mayor and Council's consideration of a resolution which will approve the 2021 Council Regular Meetings and Work Sessions. Before you is an oversized calendar showing the 36 upcoming council meetings for 2021. Blue highlighting indicates a regular council meeting and red highlighting a work session. In 2021, there are four regular city council meetings which will fall on a Wednesday due to observed holidays being on a Monday, which is Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day. In preparing the 2021 calendar, the following dates were taken into consideration. The city's 11 observed holidays which are highlighted in green, the Mayor's Day Conference in January, and the GMA Conference in June. Our first regularly scheduled meeting in 2021 will be on Monday, January 4th. The 2021 Council Meeting Calendar will be available to our citizens on our website once approved and also available at each meeting on the table with the public comment cards. We respectfully ask for the council's approval of the resolution for the 2021 Council Meeting Schedule. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions for Sudi on that? Okay, then I'll open up for a motion.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2021 City Council Regular Meeting and Work Session Schedule.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Cookerly. Um, and I believe we had no public comment on that. So, I'll close the public here before we vote on that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, will city clerk please sound the next item?
The next item is consideration of an amended emergency ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Milton, Georgia, under Section 3.18 of the Charter of the City of Milton, Georgia, to provide for the operation of the City of Milton, Georgia during the public emergency known as the novel coronavirus disease, 2019 global pandemic, to become effective upon adoption by the council to supersede the existing emergency ordinance and for other purposes. Agenda item number 2350, City Attorney Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I won't belabor the point on this. This is a continuation of our pandemic ordinance. We have had it in place since March. Um, we are trying to run it coterminous with the Governor's Declaration of Statewide Emergency, which in fact has been extended until January 8th of 2021, which is what ours would likewise be extended for. Uh, as this has gone on and on and on, we have attempted to winnow down, uh, some of the provisions, and we have done so. We've instituted the reopening plan. We've done that. Uh, we have sort of tried to take the foot off the gas a little bit with respect to what we have been doing in this ordinance, and that's what we're doing here. In fact, we had for a while always carried for, forward, Section 2 of the powers of the, the mayor on this one. We're actually removing that one. We can always reinstate it if we need to. But we're really, all we're doing now is attempting to make our emergency declaration, run coterminous with the governors just for, candidly, and an abundance of caution to ensure that we don't wish we had done that next summer, uh, particularly with respect to any federal or state FEMA or GMA funding. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, yeah, is there any questions on that or comments? I think, uh, hopefully so far I haven't taken anyone's property or guns or anything like that, just forcibly. So, no, um, okay. If everybody's good with that, I'll open up for a motion. Uh, let me ask, is there any public comment?
There are none.
Okay, close the hearing. Now I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 20-350.
Okay, I have a motion, Councilmember Longoria, uh, for approval with a second by Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we will, uh, next we'll move on to, uh, reports. Does council have anything they want to report on? Okay, we'll, uh, move on to staff with, uh, Public Works.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Couple items to report on, uh, for the month of November. Uh, as you've probably been aware of, they've started the, uh, roundabout work at, uh, Hopewell and Thompson. They've started doing the clearing equipments out there. Traffic control is up, uh, and obviously this is just the beginning of probably a year-long project. Um, also, as well as Hopewell and Hamby, traffic control is up. They're getting ready to start clearing out there. I was hoping it would be this week, but apparently they're not going to make, make a start this week. But, uh, be aware of that. The road resurfacing and the road reconstruction project is substantially complete. I hope you're satisfied. Uh, Hopewell looks fantastic. New Providence looks fantastic. Uh, they're doing some cleanup work, some shoulder work, some punchless item work. Uh, a little portion of Bethany is done. And they haven't quite got the final surface on the Deerfield Patch and Pave, but they're going to be getting to that as soon as the weather warms, warms up a little bit. So, that's, that's a, that's been a good project. Let the city council know we will have a virtual public comment period for the Morse Road Widening Project. Uh, you'll start seeing more of that, uh, on social media. Um, but it begins December the 14th and extends through January the 4th. The public goes to our website, project manager website, clicks on the link to the, uh, Morse Road Widening. It'll give you some project info and then give you an opportunity to make a comment. So, we're having that comment period again from December the 14th through January the 4th. The Saddle Springs Road Culvert Project, um, contract's moving a little slow on that one. We're hoping they would start by now, but they've got traffic control out there. They've done the survey of preliminary work. They just haven't mobilized yet. Um, also, just in case, well, if you haven't met, uh, I've hired a new facility manager. So, uh, if you're in City Hall, please make a point to introduce yourself to Mr. David Bergmeyer. Uh, and maybe at some point I can bring him in, in front of the council introducing. Next project on our radar for bid will be the resurfacing and project, resurfacing project for this fiscal year. We're working on a package now to get that back out on the streets, hopefully in January. So, you should start seeing that one, yet more resurfacing. But, uh, thank you for, for funding that, much-needed project, and you'll hopefully see some positive results. Any questions?
Any questions for Robert?
Thank you very much.
Okay, Tom?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, it's been some time since I last updated you, so let's start with, uh, programming. Um, this fall, uh, we're all done with the fall season. We had 988 kids participate in spol, in fall sports. Um, at the end of the fall season, we had three tournaments out at Bell Memorial Park and Cox Road. Um, good rental revenue there. Uh, as far as on the COVID front, um, we only had five fall reports, uh, of COVID cases affecting players. Um, I thought that was good, and, uh, we're in the winter season now, and we've got two, uh, reported cases from winter basketball. Um, I'll get to basketball in a moment. Right now, uh, with youth dance, uh, registration's steady. Um, three of the five classes made again. Uh, it's been very consistent. Um, and with youth ba, youth basketball, uh, they had their first games this weekend. Um, no reported issues, and, uh, we've got, uh, over 500 kids in the youth basketball program. Um, onto the facilities, uh, we did have, uh, you know, since the last time I spoke, we had Tropical Storm Zeta. Um, there was some trees that came down at Bell and Broadwell Pavilion. Um, all those repairs are now, uh, done. Um, and, uh, let's see, on to the former Milton Country Club. The interior renovation project over there, uh, to get the clubhouse open. Uh, we are currently, uh, finishing up the construction documents so we can get this on the street, hopefully the beginning of the year. Um, and on the staffing side, we are working to get back to full staff. Any questions?
All right, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Next, Sarah, Economic Development.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few updates. Uh, the Milton Art Council is in the middle of our second Milton's Got Talent competition. Uh, we have 12 participants this year that together, um, have gathered over 3,500 votes in this round one of voting that is still open and closes Thursday at 5 o'clock. Uh, we are also in the middle of our Shop Milton for the Holidays campaign where we encourage our establishments to send in. Uh, this year, we didn't make them do specials. We are just promoting the hours that they're open, and if they do have any specials, uh, to encourage people to shop in Milton for their holidays. And lastly, Mayor and Council, um, you approved the Chapter 4 alcoholic beverage rewrite in June. And as we were implementing, we saw, um, some additional opportunities for clarity, um, and it also encouraged a few new ideas. So, a draft was under the first presentation tonight, and I will be back, um, on December 21st presenting those changes to council.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, um, I want to next ask, ask to move into, uh, executive session to, uh, just land acquisition, potential litigation, and personnel. Do I have a motion? Oh, moved?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria with a second from Councilmember Moore for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you.[331.08]
And then a second to reconvene. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. I'll add for a motion to adjourn.